Okay, will future Councilmember Avery please meet me down here and we'll do your oath of office. Please raise your right hand. And I'm just gonna read this whole thing and you can acknowledge at the end.
Okay.
"I Wayne Avery, having been appointed to the office of City Councilmember within and for the city of Brookings, Brookings County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state and the Brookings City Charter. Faithfully discharge the duties of my office and that I am not under direct or indirect obligation to appoint or elect any person to any office position or employment under the government of the city of Brookings." Thank you. Sign this. Why don't you get the sign one? Okay. All right. Thank you. Will the clerk please take attendance?
All councilmembers are present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, item four is the approval of consent of agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda by the council? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Tildenburn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to item six A, retirement recognition. Paul?
So appreciate everyone showing up tonight for this event. For those of you that haven't been here before, every time we have a new department head come through the department of, or through the community of Brookings, we always introduce them to not only the city council but also the public. Many times they come up to the city council with policy recommendation, memos, items, and it's good for the public to understand who these individuals are who are constantly working tirelessly for this community. So Darrell's one of those individuals who recently retired. Darrell provided 23 years of service to our community and when I say community of Brookings, it's really the greater area of Brookings because of all the different relationships that we have throughout, across the state and more importantly, our region. As the chief, he led our fire department, but more importantly, he developed the professional firefighters we have today, many of which are here tonight, and I appreciate you coming to support Darrell. He was always a student of the profession, one individual told me here most recently, always learning about the intricacies and the evolution of fire safety and firefighting, fire suppression and education as well. And that's important because we have, you use that in order to teach and train our firefighters, always constantly sharing the knowledge for all those that serve our community. He taught all how to protect themselves but also the lives of individuals in our community. Darrell's leadership meant that he always led from the front, is what I was always told. He often stood in the face of danger with his firefighters. And one comment that I heard from an individual earlier is that his knowledge was vast and he understood that volunteerism is a calling and not a job. His leadership was founded in integrity, devotion and service to others. And for that, for years of service Darrell, we thank you for your commitment to this community. Thank you very much. If I could, could I get all the firefighters up here to take a picture with Darrell? Thank you, guys. Before everyone leaves, before everyone leaves, I would just like to comment, we are having a celebration, so everyone's invited in case you don't stay for the next item. We are having a celebration honoring those individuals that are retiring now, including Jackie but Darrell but also Dale Allgood, who is the Street Division Superintendent Mechanic, Thursday, June 17th from two to four here in the city. So you guys are welcome back. At that point in time, we'll make sure and have goodies and snacks for everyone to enjoy. So thank you for coming and supporting Darrell. Darrell, thank you. Jackie, you'd come forward. For over 30 years, Jackie has served this community, starting off back in 1990 as Assistant City Engineer and then in 2004 becoming the first ever female city engineer for the community of Brookings. Jackie has been instrumental in millions of dollars of construction throughout this entire community, things that we probably don't ever even think about, but Jackie has spent tireless nights trying to make sure that she's taking care of every aspect of the project. Just to name a few of these nationally recognized projects, they include the Southland Detention Pond, Brookings Runway Realignment Project, 22nd Avenue Reconstruction Project, and probably one of the biggest is the one you're working on right now, and that's the interchange for the 20th, first, 20, I'm sorry, the 20th Street Interchange Project. She also led many policy changes that will protect this community and will signify the legacy that will last for many years here in this community. Jackie sacrificed countless hours and often working late into the hours and weekends, making a significant difference for this community. She is one that does not seek for accolades but assurance that we're protected from the built environment. Jackie has been a pillar of this community and this organization. For her years of service, we thank you for your commitment to this community, to this organization. So please help me by thanking her.
Okay, we do not have an SDSU student report tonight. Item six D, open forum. At this time, any member of the public may request time on the agenda for an item not listed. Is there any member of the public who wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on. No contracts or change orders tonight. Item eight, ordinance, first reading. Item eight A, introduction and first reading on ordinance 21-019, an ordinance establishing a schedule for introduction and adoption of the annual municipal budget ordinance of the city of Brookings, South Dakota. Second reading will be the June 22nd. Jake, our Assistant City Manager, will review this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The passage of Senate Bill 138 allows... ...as late as the first regular city council meeting in November. Previously, law required that the first reading of the budget ordinance would be held in the month of September. Moving the introduction of the annual budget ordinance to later in the year will allow for a better understanding and projecting of revenues and expenditures, which in turn allows for more accurate budgeting. In order to take advantage of the delayed timeline, the city is required to pass a budget schedule ordinance, which would be accomplished by this item before you. With that, would stand for any questions?
On this item. Does the council have any questions or comments? Okay, second reading in action again will be held on this ordinance on the June 22nd meeting. Item eight B, introduction and first reading on ordinance 21-020, a temporary ordinance establishing procedures pertaining to licensing medical cannabis establishments in the city of Brookings, South Dakota. Public hearing on 20, another public hearing will be on June 22nd, 2021. Mike Struck will review this item for us.
Thank you. Ordinance 21-20 is a temporary ordinance concerning the medical cannabis establishments. It's temporary in nature due to the passage of the bill. The Department of Health is still working on their rules and regulations for the licensing of these particular establishments. This temporary ordinance is kind of to buy the city a little bit more time to get their rules and regulations in place, but also to make sure that they're consistent with the regulations that are coming from the Department of Health. That's that in a nutshell, it is coming to you as a unanimous recommendation from the planning commission and stand for any questions that you may have.
This item. Seeing none, is there any council questions or comments? Okay, again, public hearing in action on this will be on the 22nd of June meeting. Item nine, public hearings and second readings. Item nine A, public hearing on community development block grant, application and community development and housing needs assessment plan. Assistant Manager Jake Meschey will review this item for us.
Good evening again, mayors and members of the council. This public hearing will allow public comment on the community development block grant application and the community development and housing needs assessment plan. The approximate $2 million community development block grant would fund a joint... ...house, the food pantry, Brookings Backpack Project, Senior Commodity and the United Way. The building would be located on First Lutheran Church property under a long-term lease with the United Way serving as the building owner. The city council had previously identified about $300,000 for the project as part of the city council financial policy projects. At this time, staff would recommend utilizing those funds for non-grant eligible expenses if we are successful in our grant application. We're in the process of still determining exactly what those would be, but some examples would include, likely include engineering and design. A future discussion could take place on using funds for furniture, fixtures and equipment for the facility. I want to thank a number of the members of our partner organizations that are here tonight, staff and pastor, members representing Senior Commodity, the United Way Board, United Way Staff, Food Pantry, Brookings Backpack Project, as well as Design Arc and First District, as well as First Lutheran Church. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Todd Case and Greg Mog, who will talk a little bit more about the community development grant program.
Good evening. Many of you... My name's Todd Case, I'm the Executive Director of the First Planning District, First District Association of Local Governments is our moniker. We've been an organization providing technical services in the other 75 communities and 11 counties of northeastern South Dakota since 1971. And one of the things that we do for our memberships is we do prepare grant applications. And the one that's getting ready to be submitted on your behalf is to the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the Community Development Block Grant Program is a program under HUD out of Washington, DC. Every year, the state receives an allocation from HUD to make applications. Most of those projects are generally water and sewer type projects. However, with the CARES allocation that came down last year, approximately $6 million was set aside for COVID-based projects. And this project, the food pantry project, is something that addresses food insecurity, which was one of the prescribed guidelines in the COVID dollars. And so it makes it to be an eligible project. We are requesting up to $2 million in grant funds. It appears that at this point in time, there would not be a match requirement. There's something really special about this pot of money, of that $6 million that's been allocated to the state. About $2 million has already gone out in some other projects throughout the state. So it's our intent that if the city decides to move forward, acting as a pass-through to the United Way and the other subgroups, we would assist in the preparation of the application, submission of the application, hopefully the funding, and then assist you with the administration of those dollars moving forward. I'd be very glad to take any questions about the program if you have any at this time.
Thank you, Todd.
I think the last CDBG we did was with the Boys and Girls Club here in Brookings a few years ago. Sorry, Watertown. Wrong, wrong, wrong town.
Yeah.
Next, we'll have Heidi from the United Way as well as Thomas and Nick from Design Arc talk a little bit about the site layout as well as the design of the building.
Good evening, I'm Heidi. Brookings area, United Way. I will just kind of talk a little bit about who's going to be in and how this building is Brookings community, not only now but really growing into the future. With this building, like has been mentioned, we're talking about the food pantry, the Brookings Backpack, Senior Commodities, and then the United Way office. Within the United Way suite up there, we also will continue to house the volunteer connections portion of the helpline center, which is nice too because the backpack and the food pantry will have a deeper connection to be able to recruit volunteers through that, that program too. Really looking to make this building as flexible as we can. So Backpack Program has, has said that, you know, they are open to when they aren't doing their program, that that space could be used for quarterly meetings or groups needing to meet and those types of things as well. Having the loading dock will certainly be easier for those Feeding South Dakota trucks that come. And actually, all three of those food insecurity programs do get deliveries from Feeding South Dakota. So it'll be nicer for them too to be able to come and do one drop versus going to the different locations. It'll be easier too to be able to get the food into the building versus right now, those locations don't necessarily have that loading dock to be able to bring it right in, so it's left outside and then staff needs to physically bring each component in. So this will be much easier on the bodies and also streamline the process. Looking to make it with the United Way building or offices being in there, that building will then to be able to serve as kind of a front door for some of the other nonprofits that maybe when food pantry isn't in service or the backpack program isn't in service, but somebody needs to come drop something off, we can be there to, to help facilitate those types of situations as well. Little bit of flex space built in there, knowing that we can use that space for senior commodities if needed, but we also think that maybe just in the loading dock area, we may be able to make that, that work because the food comes in and goes out very quickly with that one. So knowing that if you build it, we will find reasons to use that building and it's nice to have a little bit of space to, to work with there as we see what other needs come up in the community. I'll pass it on to you guys.
And I'm Tom Squires from Design Arc Group.
And I'm Nicholas Kummer from Design Arc Group.
So essentially, when we were approached for this project, we, we reached out to them to figure out what all their needs were and we started with just the food pantry and their location and we found out that, you know, basically we're located in four or five different locations throughout the city and it's not efficient for somebody coming to the site. So that's why, you know, we started working through this project. It made sense why we got it brought to the Peace Lutheran is that this also follows their beliefs at their church. And so they started saying, well, let's, let's find a spot for them here. And we kind of just started growing the, the concept of this to make it so that with the beta bus or somebody driving there has a one-stop shop. It makes it more efficient and a lot more meaningful to all the people that are going there because they can go and do everything they need to in one spot. I'll let Nick talk a little bit more about the design.
So there was a lot of considerations for either the three tenants... ...future tenants as well. There are... ...that are a little too small that they're growing out of already. So these spaces increase their size and allow them to future grow, you know, for the most part. That flex space is also something that can be, if something needs to happen in the future, they can have that as well and it can change use as need be. We were really trying to make this as efficient as possible with least amount of corridors and, you know, all of the usable space being allocated to each one of the tenants. This kind of came about through a lot of process and a lot of design option to get everything right for everyone with the size and trying to mitigate the excess space and trying to make it as efficient as we possibly could. We had a lot of design considerations with the church as well. There were aspects of what they wanted to see and they didn't want contrast with the surrounding neighborhoods and the residential neighborhoods around them as well. And we also have a park right next to the building. They did not want through traffic because right now they're dealing with through traffic considerations and they don't want that traffic coming through there next to the park and ripping up their lot too much. So with this design, we separated the two lots so that there is no through traffic and then any of the trucks coming in can come in from the back entrance. So there is no more excessive, hard traffic coming through there. This design that we came up with is more of a residential design to help match what is surrounding the context, but without contrasting the existing church that is there itself. We want to keep in mind that there are some nice neighborhoods right next to them and we are providing screening around of these roads and in the back of house as well. There is an aspect to each one of these three tenants that the people using this kind of want to keep it private. So there is a back entrance as well that provides a private entry so people can access this without being in public as well. And then obviously, all the modern technologies as well with new lighting, with LED, reducing their cost and making sure all the amenities are shared really kind of brings it into the future as well.
Counsel, have any questions? Nick?
...for Heidi. I'm really excited about this new facility, and I appreciate the creativity that you all have used to think about how you would share the space. And I like the flex space for inevitable growth. Have you thought about, I'm sure you have, but what the impact ongoing maintenance and repair from a United Way perspective will be over time of having a facility that's yours and is this large? Does that change kind of your outlook long-term?
You know, as we were talking about this and really how it started to where it is now, it has morphed quite a bit. It kind of just made sense that United Way, having the professional staff with full-time being there, would be the owner on the building. And so that's one of the things that to be able to further impact the community in a positive way, we're willing to take on that. We also know that there's lots of great businesses that can help us support those kind of endeavors through the community, either through in-kind services or specific donations to help with that.
Thanks.
Patty?
Is this design, did you work towards trying to make it a LEED-certified? I mean, these are nonprofits that were assisting, so all the costs that we came down, whether it's for United Way or everyone else, have you put as many of those features into the design of this building as possible?
So we have, we have been starting to account for all of the different sustainable part of it. You know, that's part of why we're looking as we're designing this, what's the most efficient way to help reduce heating and cooling costs. There is several different options that we can explore as we work through the kind of the concept of it. You know, the exterior just is something that we can still play with to actually get more efficiency to out of it. At this point, there's, we don't have everything fully defined to that next level when we get it to that sustainable side of it, but we could start implementing more of those features into this very easily. We have kind of a plan for some of those areas to start accounting for more energy efficiency to help reduce the costs on their end of it as well, so.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? Holly?
I have two questions, and my first one, Heidi, you might be able to answer. If not, maybe Jake would have the answer. What is the timeline on the grant proposal? When would we know whether or not we would receive the funds?
Yeah, so Todd may be able to help out with this a little bit, too. If all is successful tonight and we get the go-ahead, Heidi, Todd, as well as Greg are all working on the grant application right now. We anticipate we'd be able to wrap that up by the end of the month. I believe Todd's aggressive timeline is have that submitted to the state by July 4th, go to bid by this fall. Again, if we're successful. As far as the notification, just working backwards, somewhere between July 4th and this fall. But Todd, if you have more insight on the state process, that would probably be helpful.
I think, you know, if we get the things submitted by the 4th of July, we still have an environmental review that's going to have to be done as part of the project. There'll be a few other subtle massages. The GOED staff currently is, has, in the process of hiring new people. So I do know that they're a little bit taxed right now with their ability to process applications, but I think Jake is correct. We're hoping that we can have things prepped and ready so to bid and looking at construction in 2022.
My second question, I don't know if maybe Paul, you're the right one to ask this of, but given the fact that our current food pantry is a city-owned building, do we have any ideas yet for what that would be used for?
Right now, we don't. Hopefully, we attain the grant. After we attain the grant, get the facility constructed, probably be a year or if not longer out before it's fully functional. So at that point in time, we'd have to make sure and budget for demolition of the site and, of course, backfill. We currently have it as a parking lot right adjacent to it. So there are plenty of opportunities there. You know, right now, we're also talking about the development of the police department. Should we need an additional site, that would be an optimal site within proximity. So there are a lot of opportunities that the council could consider in the future.
Any other, Leah, you have a question?
Just like to say, in addition to thanking all the people that are here tonight and who will be representing these entities, I think a special thank you also goes to the congregation up at the church there for making their land available for this project. And it is something I think that the whole community can agree on and support. So it's nice to see something like that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the public that has any questions or comments on the subject? Seeing none, there is no action on this. It was just more or less an informative slot. And then now we'll move on to, thank you, we'll move on to item nine B, Action to Adopt the Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment Plan as part of the Community Development Block Grant application. And Jake will present this item.
Thank you again, mayor and members of the council. As was stated, the Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment is part of the CDBG process and something that must be adopted. Basically, as staff, we utilized the version from the Boys and Girls Club some years back and modernized it to meet the needs for our current application that we're in the process of. As staff, we do recommend adoption of the plan.
Okay. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any council have any questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, item nine C, Action on Resolution 21-049, a resolution designating the city manager to sign the documents and be the environmental certifying officer for the Community Development Block Grant for a joint facility to address food insecurity. Jake will present this item also.
Again, this is a resolution must be adopted as part of the CDBG process. The resolution would designate the city manager as the city's official for the purpose of signing CDBG grant, or grant agreements, contracts, correspondence, pay requests, and other required documents. Additionally, the resolution would designate the city manager as the city's environmental certifying officer for the purpose of signing environmental reports, correspondence, and other required documents and forms. Staff does recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Jake. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, does the council have any questions or comments? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
All right. One more time, Jake. Item nine D, Action on Resolution 21-048, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and submit a Community Development Block Grant application for a joint facility to address food insecurity. Jake will present this item.
Again, this one's pretty self-explanatory. It does authorize the city manager to sign and submit the grant application. The grant application is currently being prepared by First District, Heidi from United Way, as well as our staff here in the city, and staff does recommend approval of the resolution.
I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment or questions? Seeing none, does the council have any questions or comments? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item nine E, Public Hearing in Action on Ordinance 21-010, an ordinance to change the zoning within the city of Brookings, rezoning 5.75 acres, generally located along the 1500 and 1600 block of Main Avenue South, from a residence R1A, single-family district, to a business B2A office district. Mike Struck, our Community Development Director, will review this item.
Thank you, mayor and members of the council. This is a rezoning request before you for approximately 5.75 acres on the east side of Main Avenue as you're heading south out of town just before the hill. The proposal is rezoned from an R1A, which is a low-density, single-family-only district, to a B2A district, which the B2A district is a restrictive business district, more catered to neighborhood-type commercial. The property is surrounded by a residentially zoned property. To the north is an apartment complex. To the east is R2 zoning, but predominantly single-family homes. To the south is additional single-family homes, plus there's an advanced facility immediately adjacent. And then across the street to the west is single-family zoning as well. The comprehensive plan does account for this area as an urban, low-intensity area, which essentially would support single-family manufactured housing, office, and local retail-type districts. This does come to you from the Planning Commission with a nine-to-zero vote recommending approval, and I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Public hearing. Are there anyone in the, in the audience that would like to make any comments or ask questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Justin Booker with Banner Associates, representing the buyer of the parcel. Right now, they're proposing to put a dentist office on approximately half the parcel. We haven't proceeded with any design yet. So it's really kind of a blank slate right now. There probably are going to be some design considerations with there being a hill, you know, adjacent to the project, and it's a five-lane road, and there'll be some utility concerns, but we'll deal with that as we go.
All right.
So I'd stand for any questions if there are any.
Does the council have any questions for Mike or Justin?
Thank you.
I have a question. Mike, I think there was some discussion about this once. This zoning doesn't allow for, for, how do I say it, multiple family housing, does it? Is there a possibility of changing that? Like, say, if the dentist office is on the south side, you have apartments already on the north edge of that?
You could look at something like that. We have had some discussions about that, and that's where we start to look at the intensity. It is urban, low-intensity, but you start looking at the dwelling units per acre. And depending on how many acres would be available, we had discussed internally, if higher-density residential development was considered, we'd certainly encourage it on the north end of the property closer to the existing multifamily.
Right. I guess, you know, we, we had a comment at the last meeting about, you know, this was, we're running out of developable space for residents, and the comment was well-taken. And I thought maybe we should discuss that a little bit more on this meeting, but it's always good to have a new dentist office, too. Thank you. Close the public hearing, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any council questions or items, or questions or discussion on this? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item eight B, Public Hearing in Action on Ordinance 21-011, an ordinance to change the zoning within the city of Brookings, rezoning Lot 11A, Block 6, Folsom's Edition, also known as 204 First Street South, from an industrial I-1 light district to a business B3 heavy district. Mike Struck, our Community Development Director, will review this item.
Thank you. This rezoning proposal is located just about two blocks west along First Street. It's a rezoning proposal to change it from a light industrial district to a B3 district, which is a heavy business district. Primary reason for the rezoning request is those two districts are very, very similar. However, the B3 does cater more to your commercial business opportunities and does introduce retail opportunities into this particular area. And the applicant essentially is trying to keep his options open, and when he was looking at constructing his facility, was approached by some service retail-type businesses. And so it just provides more flexibility for the owner. This is an area that, in the comprehensive plan, is identified as a downtown district, so it would support your office, your local retail, and your mixed-use type development. And it does come to you with an eight-to-zero recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Hearing. Is there anyone in the, in the public that would like to make comment or ask questions? Not being the case, close the public hearing. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Does any council have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, pity clerk, please call the roll.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item eight D, Public Hearing in Action on Ordinance 21-018, an ordinance to permit by conditional use an office in a residence R2, two-family district on the south, 105 feet of Lot 1 in Block 7, Morehouse Edition, also known as 903 A Street. Mike Struck, Community Development Director, will also review this item.
If, if it's okay with you, we can address this one and go back and get the other rezoning.
That'd be fine. I thought I, I probably, yeah, you're right. I did jump.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. This is a conditional use to establish an office use in a residential-zoned district location on A Street that is just west of Madera Avenue, more commonly known where the SDSU Foundation offices are. In the R2 district, office uses are allowed by a conditional use. And this is one that we are placing some conditions on this to be for the applicant only, for the management company office use only. And then we would also recommend that the parking requirements for off-street parking would be waived, as well as the screening, screening of that parking be waived as well. And I'll get into a little bit of the reasons for that. This is also located within a historic district, and we did go through that 11.1 review process with the State Historic Preservation Office, as well as the Brookings Historic Preservation Commission. We felt that if we followed the strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance, it would be a detriment to the neighborhood in that the remaining green space that is on that lot is on the north side of this home between there and the apartment building, and we essentially have to pave that entire portion of the yard. And then also requiring to screen it from the adjacent residential properties would essentially result in an enclosure that you'd have to open gates, and it just seemed like that was a little excessive. Plus, what that would bring to the character of the neighborhood just would not fit in. There is existing boulevard parking that has been in existence for a significant period of time, and we felt that was adequate. There's two people that would work out of this particular location. And currently, what we've been discussing with, with some of these property management companies is a lot of their leases and bill payments and such are all being done online. And so there's very little actual interaction that they come into the office. So with that, this does come to you with a recommendation of nine-to-zero from the Planning Commission recommending approval, and we'd stand for any questions you may have.
Open for the public hearing. Is there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, seconded, moved to seconded. Is there any questions? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to nine G. Public Hearing in Action on Ordinance 21-014, an ordinance to change the zoning within the city of Brookings, rezoning Lot 1, Block 2, Folsom Edition, also known as 530 First Street South. Lots 2 and 3, Block 2, Folsom Edition, also known as 110 Sixth Avenue South, from an industrial I-1 to a light district, I-1 light district to a business B3 heavy district. Mike, will you please present this also?
Thank you. This is very similar to the, to the previous. Same type of zoning from an I-1 district to a B3 district provides them more options when they're looking at potential tenants. This particular site is, you know, kind of perceived as a redevelopment opportunity. They are proposing a mixed-use project on-site that would come in the future through a conditional use process. The future land use does identify this area as an urban high-intensity, so it would be supportive of multifamily housing, office, commercial, and mixed-use projects. This does come to you with a nine-to-zero recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission, and I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, open. Okay, open. Would you like to comment or question anything on this? Seeing none, close the public hearing. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any council questions or discussion? Seeing none, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Okay, item 9I, public hearing in action on Resolution 21-052, a resolution amending the 2040 comprehensive plan's future land use map. Mike Struck will present this, please.
Thank you. The item before you tonight is a request from development team to revise or amend our future land use plan in the comprehensive plan. And this is an area that's located near 34th Avenue and Eighth Street South. On the overhead map, you can see the red circle area. The actual area that is under consideration is kind of that irregular-shaped, greenish-colored area, I guess, on the east side of 34th Avenue. This is something that is currently identified within the comprehensive plan as an open space, wetlands, floodplain area, and the intent when the comprehensive plan was put together is our consultants utilized the best available data they had at that time to really look at these areas from a very high-level view. And so there's a number of criteria that they put into their modeling system, one of which was is if property was located in a floodplain, floodplain, it automatically received a score of 10, which results in, when you look at our development suitability map, is severe limitations for your development. So the applicants are seeking to try, that's their official request, to change it to like a business park, light industrial area. They're seeking opportunities to develop this area. This went through a pretty extensive review process with our development review team. We asked for some additional information. You know, it's close to some of our wellfields, our drinking water supply, so there are some concerns there. It is low. It would require some filling of the property. And then ultimately, we were presented it to, to the planning commission, and the planning commission did vote eight to one recommending approval of the amendment, and staff at this time does not object to the amendment.
Okay, open the, yeah, public hearing. Any comments? You state your name and, and your address.
Chad Borchard. I'm with CKS Partners, the, the group that's brought this request for the amendment to the land use map forward. Or, I guess we just moved. I'm a resident of Volga at 504 Hudson, Hudson Circle. I have been a resident in Brookings for 17 years, and I am, well, you know, have become well aware of the, this site and the factors that caused us to look at it closer with city staff and BMU. And as Mike alluded to, there were, there was significant vetting went into the site prior to bringing it into the planning commission. We, we, you know, for every concern, as Mike alluded to, I think we have mollified those concerns, whether by providing data from, from BMU or outside experts in regards to the suitability of the soil beneath the, beneath the surface, all the factors that go into the, the suitability map. We addressed them one at a time and brought data forward that, that, as Mike said, when you look at a more granular exploration of the site warranted the, the planning commission giving the eight to one approval that it did. So I'm here before you to answer questions if you have any, but that is, that is what we are bringing forward tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close the public hearing. I entertain a motion to approve. Seeing no motion, the, the item dies. Thank you. Item 9J, tabled item, public hearing and action, resolution 18-088, a resolution of necessity for street assessment project 2019-02 STA, 15th Street South and 7th Avenue South. Entertain a motion to remove this item from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
So we'll have this item brought before us by our public works director.
Go ahead, Jackie.
And our city engineer that's retired now.
Not quite yet. I guess I'm still on the clock. This item was a previous resolution that we brought to the city council back in 2019 for adoption, and so all the figures in this resolution are outdated. So we would like to have the city council rescind the resolution, so we're recommending a motion to rescind, and then we'll move on to the, the newer resolution on the next item.
Okay, thanks, Jackie. Entertain a motion to rescind this item.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Request for public comment, anyone? Is there any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Okay, item 9K, public hearing in action on Resolution 21-047, a resolution of necessity for street assessment project 2021-02 STA, 15th Street South and 7th Avenue South. And Jackie, you'll be presenting this also? Or is DJ going to do?
Yes, I am. This project is our first step to, again, initiate the resolution of necessity 7th Avenue's Street South project. And the assessment project includes constructing these two collector streets that you can see highlighted on the screen, with water and sanitary sewer mains, grading, gravel, curb and gutter, and asphalt street, also with storm sewer, detention pond, drainage channel, and wetland mitigation. So it's been kind of an ongoing design process if we, as we've worked through this project. And so we're ready to present the new updated figures from the, for the resolution necessity. And so my long memo has a lot of the information into it, but I'll highlight that we do have three private property, properties located in yellow on the attached map, and then the city owns the frontage that's highlighted in red. So we do, the city does have quite a bit of the, the frontage on this project. So the properties would be assessed by the front foot method for a 31-foot-wide residential street, and so the private assessment frontage is about 808 feet, and then the city has a little over 4,100 front feet. And then the estimated costs in the resolution for the street and drainage construction is estimated at $215.65 a front foot, and the water main costs are estimated at $48.64 per front foot, and then the sanitary sewer main, which the sanitary sewer main would only be assessed to the 7th Avenue South parcels, and that is estimated at $51.66 per front foot. And so this project, the city will also pay the extra width and thickness, signage, striping, and sidewalk, and drainage components. And so all that is outlined in your council, or council packet. And the resolution necessity has the assessment being paid back over 10 years at 10% interest on the unpaid balance. And then, provided the resolution's successful tonight, we'll finish our design on the next, and advertise for bidding in the next upcoming weeks, and then start construction this fall and complete it during the summer of 2022. And staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Jackie. Open for public hearing. Is there any questions or comments? Jacob, please state your name and, and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city manager, and councilors. My name's Jacob Mills. I'm actually here representing my mom, Joy, because she's the official owner of the parcel up there in yellow. We own a little bit of frontage, and then Rob Jones is the, the other private property owner. So I'll be, try and be brief, but, you know, I'm not here to slow you down at all in your process. We are in support of the project. Project connecting a couple of major roads. It's been a long time coming, as a lot of you know. You know, I think we could probably all agree, it would be great if we maybe had gotten there five years ago, six years ago, something like that. Certainly easier when you're on the edge of town than when you're completely surrounded. We primarily just had two questions, and I don't necessarily need an answer for these tonight, knowing that the resolution of levying the assessments will be after the completion of the project, but we just kind of wanted to be here on record to ask these questions. So the first one would be, there is a TIF district that's been added to this project since the last time it came around to us was about three years ago, and we actually received an estimate of our assessment at that time, and that was in your, your previous resolution. And since then, the TIF district was created, which shows in your memo, contributes hopefully about $1.3 million of funding to the project. But it's a little unclear to me that it seems like those costs are the benefit from the TIF increment is going solely to the city and is not lowering any portion of the assessable costs. And so there's, to me, unless I'm misunderstanding it, a little bit of an oddity in that the private property is generating the increment that's helping to support the road, but then also paying a full, normal assessment. And it would seem to me that there should be some sort of an offset, that it's reducing those assessable costs in some portions. Certainly still, the city owns 80% or 90% of the frontage. The city's still the primary benefactor in that situation, but at least there's a recognition that we're not double-dipping on private property in a normal assessment and a TIF district. And then the other is just a comment, you know, that we've talked about, you know, assessments don't come up all that often in Brookings, but, you know, we've been involved in a few of them, and one of the challenges for any private property owner of assessment is timing is not in our control. You decide when the project happens, you decide how much the assessment is, you tell us when the bill is due. And it's due in full when you tell us. And to us, it's, it would be much more palatable if that assessment is spread over time, whether it's three years, five years. Certainly, if it's a larger dollar assessment, $100,000 plus, that's a bigger factor. And it would be for any private property owner, you know. Any private property owner to be put in a position where new street, great benefit to you as a private property owner for sure, but to perhaps have to sell property that you maybe inherited and can't actually afford the assessment, or have to borrow money or sell that property to fund that assessment is just always something that I would rather see us have, you know, some element of our assessment process that stretches that out over time for the private property owners. So, like I say, not asking for an answer to either of those points, not asking you to slow down the process, just wanted to be here to make a couple of those points, so that when I see most of you or all of you in two years, we've got something to look back at. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jacob. Any other comments from the public? Mr. Jones? Please state your full name.
Robert Jones, and good evening. And, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for letting me speak. I, I only have, going along with what Jacob has said, I don't have much to add to that, other than the fact, this is something that's been going on for, and Jackie could give me the exact years on this, but I think it's past eight years. And the cost of this road has gone up and up and up and up. And I guess, I do understand precedence the city has, both in interest rate and time to pay back and such scenarios. But I think in this particular case, we have seen a number of price increases, and I was hoping that maybe we have, we have some consideration, both on time and interest rate, on, on paying for the, for the new road and improvements. And so that would be basically my only comment to that. And I realize, again, it's hard to set a precedent when you let people change, change that all the time. But because of the longevity of this project and time getting completed, I would like a consideration if we could see on that. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? We'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Is there any questions from the council? Or comments? Seeing none. Oh, Patty, sorry.
I just wanted to clarify. I know we had some issues with the drainage plan going south on this property, so we've got that all cleared up, and everybody's okay.
Yes, that's correct. This project will include a drainage channel that will flow from the south end of 15th Street South down to a local detention pond, so that is included in the, in the city's costs of the drainage.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Leah?
I would like to just make a comment. I, I was interested to hear about Mr. Mills' concerns with this, and I'm appreciative that he wants to move forward with this project. But I do think it would behoove us to, to study this a little bit more. I would like more clarity on exactly how these things happen. And, you know, speaking as a property owner who has had an assessment in the past, I can verify that that's a surprise letter no one loves to get. And so it might be helpful to figure out ways that we could better project and forecast which areas of the community are going to be looking for those assessments and when that's going to hit. I just, I wonder if there's more we could do there to help the public understand that.
The assessments that we're aware of that might be occurring in the near future, the next one that's probably most possible is Western Avenue. This is one that's been on the books for quite some time. The unfortunate thing is the delays, right? We're working with multiple landowners and circumstances that we have to work through, and anytime you add time, it adds costs. For the public, so they fully understand, the way the assessments work, we utilize city funds, tax dollars, for your assessments. So anytime you do have assessments, that's going to take away from your capital improvement projects. So we'll just have to scrap projects as we add more assessments. We are looking, and we have had a policy in the past, that our, our special assessments is 10 years at 10%, correct, Jackie?
Correct.
Correct. And for the most part, most developers are able to go to the local financial institutions to get a much lower interest rate than that 10%. And we encourage that as well. Therefore, we're not utilizing city tax dollars to finance these projects. Now, having come from other states, in other communities, what we used to do is use kind of a special revenue bond, which would allow 10 years, maybe further, 15 to 20 years, and, but utilize the city's credit in order to attain those bonds. However, unfortunately, those special revenue bonds are usually a lot higher interest rates than your general obligation bonds, but it's a lot lower than that 10%, usually looking at your 3% to 4%. I'm not sure what the market is going at today. And so that's something we can definitely look at. I did talk to Steve a little bit about it today. DJ was looking at other communities in South Dakota. I'm not sure if it's legal in South Dakota, but it is an option that we can look at. Rather than utilizing your tax dollars so you can keep that money going for other capital improvement projects, you could utilize this mechanism of financing to still make the assessments a little bit more palatable, put them out a little bit longer than your 10 years, especially for those homeowners that might see this cost in the future.
Holly, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I agree with the sentiments that Leah raised. Actually, be really interested in possibly having this topic on a study session in the future, so that we can do a deeper dive on what our policies are and how we go about the assessment. And if there is being, research being done on other policies, that'd be a good opportunity for us to kind of dive into that as well.
Yeah, definitely. If, if, what's going on across the state and whether it's legal and, and how that mechanism would work, that's something we'd bring, of course, to city councils in the form of a policy. And so we can definitely bring that forward in a future work session.
Okay, any other que-
I'm not sure if I missed this, but what is the timeline, Jackie, from start to finish?
We would like to bid this project here towards the end of summer, or either, you know, even early July, and then start construction this summer, and then finish in 2022. So it'd be a two-year process. We'd really like to do a lot of the drainage components this late fall when it's dry and a little bit frozen. That's really ideal. And then it'll give us time to have the utilities settle over the winter, have any trench settlement and so forth, and then finish the curb and gutter and the paving in the next summer.
Thank you.
Okay, any other more, any other questions or comments? Patty?
Just since we're kind of refreshing our memory on this whole project, it's been a while since we visited it. We also have a planned affordable housing project going in on the south end, and, you know, he's already wondered why it's taken so- And, you know, he's already wondered why it's taken so long for us to get this far, and I'm just afraid we may lose him and that project if we keep pushing things out too far. So I just want to keep that in everybody's mind as well.
Okay. Thank you. Without any other questions or comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item 10A, action resolution 21-050, a resolution approving the appointment of Assistant City Attorney Eric N. Rasmussen. And Paul will present this item.
Actually, it'll be Steve.
Okay. We'll go with that.
This is a request for assistance or help. It's probably long overdue, but I've known Eric Rasmussen since the late or mid 60s, 1960s. We grew up about a block apart from each other, and we've been friendly colleagues for all our years here in Brookings. And so I think Eric would be a welcome addition to providing services to the city of Brookings. He has a lot of municipal experience, and it would be helpful for me to have an assistant in case I take a vacation or need some help. So that would be the request.
Okay. To approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Is there any council questions or comments? Holly?
I see that Mr. Rasmussen is not here tonight. Is he aware that this burden is going to be placed upon him?
Well, you're supposed to take action while they're not here.
Right, right.
But actually, no, we've had, and I certainly wouldn't do that to my longtime friend, but good point.
Leah?
I was just going to ask, I know he's been in the past a member of any of those ties that we'd have to navigate.
Yeah, I believe that the planning currently holds would be incompatible with this position, but he understands that. So there will be action taken there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Will the-
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10B, action on resolution 21-053, resolution designating Fishback Soccer Complex as permissible consumer fireworks discharge location on July 4th, 2021. And are we going to have Pete present this? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Currently, the city of Brookings does not allow the residential discharge of fireworks within the city limits. At the May 11th city council meeting, council requested staff to investigate and review the potential discharge of fireworks at an identified location. Specifically, the city of Watertown was identified as having allowed consumer fireworks at their soccer complex. Checking into the background of this, the city of Watertown has historically allowed it around Lake Compeska due to an annexation policy. However, due to the, in the interest of public safety, they passed a resolution that rescinded that approval specifically in their city parks out there. And the resolution designated their soccer complex as an agreeable site. But that was only after Dan Rattershot, President of Loose Fireworks, submitted a plan to the city of Watertown. And basically, the plan outlined safety requirements. Loose fireworks themselves actually supervised what was going on out there, set a time limit, and had them sign liability waivers with very little involvement by city staff. I think the only involvement I was able to find was a couple parks employees were there to make sure everything was put in the dumpster on July 5th. After reviewing the city land within the limits of the city of Brookings, about the only thing that would meet the distance requirements would be our soccer complex, Fishback Soccer. Staff recommends that an ordinance revision occur only if a local business or organization develops a safety and operational plan that's approved by the city manager, fire department, police departments, parks and recreation department, and city attorney.
I need to entertain- Seeing none, motion, item dies. Okay. Item 11, city council member introduction of topics for future discussion.
Can I go back to the previous item for a second there?
Okay.
If an interested party were to come forward, let's say maybe this year, there's not time for something like that, but would we have room to bring this back next year? Would we just have to bring it back in the same format to take a look at again? Or is there some way we'd want to let folks know if they wanted to come up with a proposal? Or maybe another question I would have, I'm not sure if anybody looked into this part, but do we have any understanding of what the loose fireworks or whatever, like what kind of cost that was for them? Do you know what they're in that for, just as a benchmark?
When I visited with Dan, we didn't talk about the costs.
Okay.
Like the plywood, somebody provided 36 sheets of plywood, and at today's price, that's $900.
Yeah, sure.
They also had some other things that were donated by other organizations. Canvassing of the area and the cleanup was actually done by Great Plains Lutheran School, things like that. We didn't talk about what it costs to lose because it sounded like a lot of that stuff was donated by other organizations.
Sure. So as far as timeline, council member, the way I could see this, if we had talked to Pete, provide the plan, provide the liability, had everything in place, we could bring this forward at the next regular meeting in June. And it also takes a simple resolution. I believe Steve researched that, already has language drafted. I don't know that anyone can come up that fast with that type of plan. But moving beyond 4th of July, if some entity should come forward with a plan, they could discuss it with us, we could bring it to a work session where you guys can discuss if you would want to have this happen, and if so, what parameters would you put around it?
Sure. That makes sense.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Patty.
Does this plan look-
Watertown, would you be comfortable with that, or would you have more you would want
to put into it?
The only thing I would consider additional, other than Watertown has, is some allowance for environmental conditions. Especially this year, it's been hot, it's getting really dry out there. That would be about the only additional thing that I could foresee. I agree 100% with the rules that they have. Dan actually took them from the American Pyrotechnics Association pamphlet on fireworks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Any other questions, comments? Leah?
I just have one more clarifying point, just on the distance. You mentioned that the Fishback Soccer would be the only place that would meet the distance requirements. What is the distance, the safe distance between those little places where people would discharge?
Consumer fireworks can go up to one inch in size. And under the APA and NFPA standards, you need 150-foot fallout range for something of that size. So that's where that distance came from. And then I also looked at the proximity of other city lands to residential areas and the noise pollution and things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Nick?
I don't-
Holly's next.
I apologize if I jumped the line. I don't have another question on this topic. I wanted to introduce another topic for future discussion.
Oh, okay. Holly, do you have something to do with-
I just wanted to state that, given the location of the soccer fields and the proximity to residential neighborhoods, potentially families with young children, individuals with pets, and the noise that can come along with fireworks, I do have some concerns about even moving forward with the potential of this at that location. And I do understand that that is the only location that could potentially be a safe location in our community. And so I guess I still have a lot of concerns about this. I don't know, I'm not familiar with the site where Watertown has theirs, and so I don't know how close in proximity there's residents, but I just know for our community, I'm just not sure I'm comfortable with utilizing that space. Especially I had noticed in some of the language that it stated fireworks could be set as late as 11:00 PM. And I imagine that along with the sound from the fireworks, we would probably be hearing a lot of barking dogs until about 11:00 PM, and then maybe even place a burden on the humane society for dogs that get out, because we know that that is something that tends to happen when fireworks are being set. So I do have several concerns about this, that if there were a business that would come forward, I would still need to have a dress before feeling comfortable.
Okay. Joey?
Yeah, I just want to agree with what Holly said. I don't like that spot. If we could move it somewhere else, that'd be great. I also think about not only the pets, the animals, I also think about the veterans who have PTSD. Those are my concerns with it.
Okay. Pete, for something that had no action, we had a lot of discussion.
It's a discussion.
All right. Let's go to item 11, city council. Introduction to topics for future discussion. Go ahead, Nick.
Fantastic. I do think we had another item on our agenda, item 9I, that died for lack of a motion, but I do think that there were some probably important discussions to be had around that particular topic. None of us wanted to make a motion in second to have that public discussion tonight, but it does seem like it'd be prudent to put on a future agenda to talk about, you know, if ever again we are to consider changes to that future land use map, or how it might impact our long-range comprehensive plan, that we have some public conversation around what those thresholds would look like. So maybe I would ask that staff, in the future, do some study on, you know, what might be a threshold that would be appropriate to make modifications to that future land use map in particular. I'll just say that I'm always a bit uncomfortable when we diverge action from, say, the planning commission, right? Because I think we rely upon them heavily. They forwarded a recommendation to us that we didn't take, but I think in this particular case, I just felt like I wanted to learn a whole lot more about any modification on future land use. So I'd like to hear more about what thresholds might initiate that in the future.
Okay. Any more? Paul, after that?
No. I think we have enough information there. Specifically what I understood, what criteria do we utilize in order to make the changes to the future land use map?
And one other thing I might note is if you and I had an absence of the country that might be experiencing certain things that are making them make modifications to their future land use plans, and if there are other regions or communities or states that are making those changes, adopting different thresholds, should we be considering that?
Sounds good.
Holly?
On a similar notion, part of the reason I was uncomfortable with moving forward with that particular item is the water implications, given that it is in a wetland. So perhaps at the same study session, or maybe at a different one, it might be good for us to revisit an ongoing conversation that our communities had around planning, around water displacement. I know that there's been plans in the works to develop a water runoff plan, but if we could maybe have that be part of the conversation, I think that is part of the reason why I was uncomfortable with that particular piece, is the water implications.
I think council's hitting on a great discussion. Here, just a few months ago, we gave a discussion on how we have 10 to 15 years of land left. And as we start developing into that 10 to 15 years and start approaching more and more into maybe five, seven years, people are going to start pushing the envelope, and it's imperative that we have those discussions now rather than later. So we'll definitely bring that forward with some insight.
Okay. Wayne?
Was kind of geared up for some discussion on that. I have some nice notes there, you know, that I was going to talk about. And it was like, I was looking around, and I really didn't want to be the one to make the motion, because I thought that would really confuse people. And then it was just over, and I was like, oh. And it was kind of a, I'm sure this gentleman out here was really wondering what happened. I'm sure that somebody will communicate, you know, that it was a real concern of ours, and rather than go through the whole discussion, we just did vote on it, but it, you know, maybe we would have been better to have the message brought out that wasn't, that we just weren't thinking about it, is that we didn't think it was the right thing at this time. So, and I'm sure-
Yeah, staff can carry forward that message for you, and then, of course, we'll invite them to the, whatever work session we have in the future as well.
Mm-hmm. And I think it wasn't that, you know, it just didn't go any farther than that. It wasn't, I mean, as you said, there are a lot of the details were worked out, possibly, but just the whole idea that the plan is in place, we spent two years developing it, and the things haven't changed since then. And other than, now this year it doesn't rain, and you can't really see what the place was like out there, but it's just not, when you look at it and you think, we're going to build these, you know, we're going to change this to an industrial development, and we're going to come out here and we're going to really be proud of it, and you look around out there, and I don't think so. And I don't think that's something that's easily changed, no matter how much bill you put in there. So, that was what I was going to say, if I had a chance. Easier to say now, and nobody's here.
Okay. Any other items or interests anybody wants to bring up? Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?